Welcome to the Doarty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include from District One Commissioner Ed Newsom, from District Two Commissioner Victor Edwards, from District Three Commissioner Clinton Johnson, from District Four Commissioner Russell Gray, from District Five Commissioner Gloria Gaines, and from District Six Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy, Assistant County Administrator Scott Addison, County Clerk Jawan Ware, and County Attorney Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Doarty County Commission meeting.
Good morning. I'd like to call the Doarty County Commissioner meeting to order this morning. I'd like to do the roll call. Commissioner Newsom?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Gray?
Present.
Commissioner Gaines?
Good morning.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
And I'd just like to say a prayer for our chairman in absence of him on business and I guess in Atlanta area. And I give him our prayers and safe return to Doarty County. I'd like to call Pastor Williamson if he will come forth to bring forth our invocation as well as lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you Pastor Williamson for taking your time this morning. Blue Springs, you can...
Thank you for asking. And before any important great undertaking, we should go to God in prayer. Let us all stand humble our hearts, humble our minds to give God all the glory. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this day. This is a day that you have made for us. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. There is none like thee, oh Lord. Thou art great and thy name is great in might. We ask thy support according to thy loving kindness, according unto the multitude of thy tender mercies, oh God. Wisdom is our desire. Give us a mind to unite and reason with one another as your people that just and equitable decisions are made for the community's sake. We realize that governing comes from you. And oh God, we ask right now that you would wrap your arms around each one of these commissioners. Touch them in a mighty way, oh God. Give them the mind, as once was said, to do what is right in thy sight. Grant us that favor, oh God, that our considerations would extend to all parts of the community. Let us unite in peace and harmony. Now I say a blessing, I ask a blessing upon the commissioner who is off on a journey. And we know you have sent him and we ask that you send him and bring him back safely. Bless this commission. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen. Now let us look to the flag as we stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Williamson. Item five minutes. Consider for action for the minutes of the August 2nd regular meeting, August 9th work session and August 9th public hearing. You all hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections? Any call? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Approve. Let's go to number six delegation. The commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to the Doarty County for which a public hearing has not been held or scheduled. Please be brief, to the point, and consider a time for others. Mr. Dawson from the Southgate Community would like to, as well as I think Ms. Frazier, you can come up with Mr. Dawson if you like from the Southgate Neighborhood Watch Committee. And Pastor Williamson, since you live in Southgate, if you want to join them or you can... He say he gonna stay seated.
Good morning.
Good morning gentlemen, ladies.
Good morning.
Good to be here this morning and thank God we saw another day that we can rejoice. I'm coming forward this morning, you know, to try to find out what the status is on our speed bumps that we requested back on February 3rd. I know that it's got to go through a process and everything, but it seemed like the process has stopped. I don't know where it is as far as us getting some kind of notification as to when the speed bumps can be placed on Estoria Drive out in Southgate. Estoria Drive is one of the most straightaway longest streets in Southgate. We have a stop sign about center ways of it. On the other side of the stop sign, we got a kind of deep curve there. Well, the cars are getting faster and the people are testing them. So they come through there wide open sometimes. We got kids and people walking in the street. We don't have any sidewalks there. So we are asking that, you know, this speed study be done and the speed bumps placed. At least three of them on Estoria Drive to break the traffic. We had one incident where they ran into Betty's yard and tore everything up. We had another incident not too long ago where they got to the end of the street to a dead end and they slid about twenty-five or thirty feet, went up on the curve, broke the curve off, and almost went in the front door of the resident there. So you got the four-wheelers come through there. They be downtown Albany to here, wide open, you know, and they be gone before you could even call the police, you see. So, you know, you got these incidents and you got the people interacting with each other in the street. Pretty much the kids out there rollerblading and whatever, you know, playing, riding their bike. And you got people walking just for exercise. We just wish that we could get these speed bumps. And I really, we thank you all, you know, for all the good work that y'all done out there at the park in Southgate. And we just ask one more request that the new exercise equipment we got out there is a great improvement. And in the summertime, you got gnats and everything, you know how the insects are, you know, and it's an exercise station, you know, so if the wind is not blowing to a decent speed, then you don't have any type of relief from your exercise and everything. So we're requesting that we get a couple of ceiling fans put up in the pavilion there. And it's outstanding pavilion, you know, we love it. So it'll kind of, you know, give you some kind of relief from the heat. And with COVID going around, hopefully it could spread it out toward the ground instead of, you know, up your nose and in your mouth and everything. So this is, this is just two requests that we are asking, you know, we want to see if we can get that done. And like I say, we appreciate all y'all done and thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Betty Frazier and I live on Estoria. I would like to read this request that I submitted three February 2021. I know since that time the director has been changed. This is from Betty Frazier to Director Public Works Larry Cook. It is requested we have speed breakers installed on Estoria Drive in Southgate subdivision. Two under twenty-seven hundred block and one under twenty-eight hundred block. The first would slow the traffic that enters the curve at twenty-eight hundred block. I've had two incidents where vehicles failed to correct at the curve in the twenty-eight hundred block resulting in substantial damage to my property. The last resulted in my having to have spot and frame replaced. It also destroyed a flowering and the cable box. The vehicle left my property and hit the car in the drive next door and caused damage to their car and yard. Purpose of the breakers, entering and exiting Estoria would possibly cause the traffic to stop for the sign. So often there are road throughs at the signs. The street ends where an elderly man sits in his drive, in his door sometimes. Just last week, a vehicle that failed to stop and skid marks up his apartment ran into this man's yard, damaged the grass, and broke a portion of the curb. I would appreciate your consideration and approval of this request. Now this request was submitted three February and the year is ending almost. And we still don't have our breakers out and I have not seen any improvements of anything happening out here. I didn't indicate in this last incident too that this vehicle that the driver, when it left my property, hit the car, it ended up right in front of this neighbor's bedroom door. And this was at ten or ten-thirty at night. So I don't know if the devices that you put down would necessarily determine how many or if we got them. Because if a driver is coming out and they see these breakers, these devices, they're not going to roll over them at the rate that they would if they didn't see them. So if this determines that we get the breakers, we might need to consider another source. Thank you.
Any one of the commissioners have any questions for?
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Jones?
I understand that you all put in a request back in February. I see Public Works Director, the new Public Works Director Chuck Mathis is on the inside. Maybe he can let us know. I don't see Jeremy Brown, who's the engineer there. Is Jeremy there? Oh Mike is he?
Mike, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I can address both of these items. The first being the request for the traffic study that was submitted in February. I'd like to apologize for the delay. It was brought to my attention last week by Commissioner Edwards and I looked into it and as you all know, traffic engineering services are provided by the City of Albany. They have been delayed as a result of COVID, not having enough staff because of the infection rate and folks being out on quarantine and their equipment was down. And so they have a backlog. They are supposed to be getting in touch with us today to confirm putting out the machine to conduct this traffic study. And so it is a priority under normal circumstances. This certainly would have been done. But because of extenuating circumstances, it has drugged out unfortunately and we apologize for that. And we will be buying the equipment to do this in-house. Although we're paying the City of Albany for this service, we don't want to be dependent going forward if we run into this particular circumstance again. So we'll know something today and we will certainly pass that information along once we hear from the traffic engineer.
Commissioner McCoy?
To the ceiling fans?
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
On that topic, what's the estimated date of the delivery on the speed sensing traffic trailers that we've purchased?
I believe they are here. I don't see Keith Johnson present.
I mean, this may be a good opportunity to deploy them, just to remind drivers of their actual speeds. I think, you know, from a traffic calming perspective, you know, we certainly need to look at a graduated policy rather than always going with the nuclear option of putting speed tables in that are permanent and very expensive. If we can work to change drivers' behaviors through, you know, awareness of their speed. Many people are distracted and, you know, cars today are pretty nice. You don't realize how fast you're going till somebody else tells you. So I think that may be a good test case to deploy them there and just see if we can remind drivers how fast they're going.
Okay. Yes, sir. We'll look into that and follow up with the board relative to that request. The ceiling fan request, I want to remind the board of the tremendous investment that has been recently made at Rock Cross Park. There's been an installation of a new sign off of MLK. And we have paved the walking trail around the park. And we've also installed a brand-new pad with outdoor workout equipment and netting to protect against the sun. So there's been an investment of over several hundred thousand dollars. And immediately after the ribbon cutting, it was requested of administration to install a sidewalk for handicap accessibility, which was approved administratively. That was about a fifteen thousand dollar investment that we're currently working on. And we recently received this request for ceiling fans. And administration is currently researching feasibility of that request. And it'll take about thirty days and we will provide you an update or our recommendation regarding the request for ceiling fans, two thousand dollars.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Gaines.
I've heard what you said about the money that we've spent at that park. We do have a master plan for that park, right?
Yes, and we've implemented it.
And when we conceived the whole notion of that park, we had the idea that it would be sort of the star in our crown in this community. Is that not correct? It was conceived as a premier park that the county would operate. So we, I mean, I don't think it's out of the ordinary that we are pursuing our original concept for that park to make it kind of something that we are proud of. So I don't think that the costs, the money that we are spending is outside of our vision for that park. I don't believe, anyway. That was my understanding, that we would create something we were proud of here and that the community could be proud of. And the entire county uses that park, so I don't see it as something out of the ordinary. And I'd like to say thank you to the folks at Southgate, Mrs. Frazier. I do understand all of the hard work that you all have done to keep that community out there looking good. I'm very proud of the work that neighborhood association is a very active association. And I encourage you all to continue to be the eyes and ears for what is needed to keep that community looking good. We're very proud of what you all do out there. So thank you all for the hard work that you all do.
Any more comment from the commission? If not, I'd like to thank Mr. Dawson, Ms. Frazier, and the Southgate community for keeping me accountable for your dollars that you act. And I appreciate you taking the time this morning. I thank you, Mr. McCoy, doing the research and expediting this. And we shouldn't have jumped these hoops anymore. So it should not take this long for these particular projects and I appreciate the professional service that everybody's doing. I thank you again. Now we'll go to our next item. A, County Administrator Michael McCoy, present to discuss the proposed incentive-based vaccination program for the citizens of Doarty County Program Partner, Representative from Phoebe Putney Memorial Hospital, Department of Public Health, Albany Area Primary Healthcare, EMA and EMS are also present. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. I would like to start by requesting that our partners come forward from EMA, Phoebe, Albany Area Primary Healthcare. I miss anybody? Oh, and Department of Public Health. So, and EMS? Yes. So this is very exciting. What we're requesting of you today, we have scheduled a vaccination event, an incentive-based vaccination event that will take place Saturday behind the Civic Center. As you all know, this summer, our cases of COVID-19 increased dramatically in our community. We've seen some of the highest rates of cases at the hospital. We've also seen a high number of deaths and this is continuing to happen. Our vaccination rate isn't where we want it to be. Our emergency management agency came up with a program, a campaign, seventy-five, strive for seventy-five. And as a part of that program to get to seventy-five percent vaccination rate in our community, we came up with the idea to have a vaccination event with an incentive attached to it. A hundred dollar per person incentive. If you come and get jabbed on Saturday, you will receive a hundred dollar prepaid Visa debit card. And so we have ARP money. We've been encouraged to spend that money as long as it is in alignment with the rules and regulations which this vaccination event is. We can pay for all expenses associated with it. And we're just delighted that we have our healthcare professionals that are partnering with us, Phoebe and Department of Public Health and Albany Area Primary Healthcare. They'll be administering these vaccines. This will be a drive-through event. We're expecting hopefully about fifteen hundred folks to participate. And we're going to do this two times. This is the first time. And then we'll probably do it again three weeks later when the second dose is due. But this is critically important in our community to incentivize folks because we've pretty much gotten a low-hanging fruit. The folks that want to do it have done it. And those that are probably hard to reach and hard to get their attention, we're hoping that the hundred dollar prepaid debit card will help them make the decision to get vaccinated and lower the transmission rate and protect the health and safety of all the citizens in our community. And of course, the ARP money has to be spent in Doarty County. So the only people that will be eligible are Doarty County residents. So if you're a Doarty County resident, whether you live in the city or in an unincorporated area, you will be eligible and you must be eighteen years or older. Will only be administering a Pfizer drug because that was just easier from an operational standpoint. And that concludes my recommendation. Of course, do I have any partners that teach that? Would you like to say something?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator. This is just a great recommendation. I'm so proud of our county administrator and efforts going in to move this forward. This is an opportunity to incentivize more people to reconsider, do your part, get the shot as we strive for seventy-five in our community. Our community is going through a tough time right now. And we're hoping that people will reconsider and certainly this is an incentive-based project that I'm certainly hoping will be successful. will be successful. It's an honor to be here, uh, with other partners here who, who came to show their support for this effort, um, and, and certainly, uh, it is presented for your consideration. Thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. And, uh, we have our medical professional here from the hospital who is on the front lines, and so if you wouldn't mind sharing a little information, please.
Thank you very much. I'm usually here with the press conference, uh, giving updates of our total admissions, our ICU admissions, and, uh, and I have to share every time, you know, that we've had deaths. We continue to have deaths from COVID-19. Uh, and I have, uh, I don't know how many times I've asked people, please get vaccinated. It is the best protection to prevent hospitalization and death for Co- from COVID. Um, and I think this initiative and this incentive will help boost the vaccination. Uh, people that have concern with their health have already become vaccinated early on, uh, and hopefully this will incentivize people to get vaccinated who feel like they don't really need the vaccine. Everyone needs to be vaccinated twelve years and over to help prevent, um, the serious consequences of COVID-19. It's not a guarantee that you won't become sick with COVID-19, but it will help prevent hospitalization and death. Nine out of ten people in our hospitals are unvaccinated. So if everyone's vaccinated, we could not have a hospital full of COVID-19 patients. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that, uh, concludes our, uh, presentation of our recommendation, and again, uh, we recommend the funding of the administration of this, uh, vac- vaccination program.
I thank all of y'all for coming, uh, this morning, and, um, I'll just relate to my colleague. Uh, anybody have any comment?
I do.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, good morning, everyone, and the Strive for Seventy-Five has been an excellent program. I've been sending a lot of signs around, uh, town pushing the Strive for Seventy-Five, I guess, percent, uh, vaccinated. Is that seventy-five for?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, great job in getting that word out. Uh, my first question is, what's the cost budgeted, Mr. McCoy, to, uh, initial? I don't know, I know we don't know exactly how many people show up, but what's the possible cost budgeted with this?
Uh, yes, sir. We're, we're asking for a budget of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's all out of ARP money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Question.
Commissioner Gang?
You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Um, it should be in your packet on.
It's in there.
Four?
Yes, sir.
Forty-two?
That's forty-two.
I don't read it. I never read.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the incentive, um, for the first, uh, shot only because it's a two, uh, uh, jab, um, regimen? Is it for the first shot only?
It'll be, so, uh, each event. Uh, so we'll have the, uh, public health, what is it? The GRICS system? Is that what it's called? Well, we'll know whether or not folks are eligible to receive the shot if they receive the shot before.
GRICS.
GRICS, GRICS system? So, uh, we'll have access to the database to determine, uh, the eligibility of, uh, folks who volunteer to participate in this program. So each event, if you're eligible, you will be eligible for a hundred dollars. So, uh, conceivably, uh, you could get two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So we're gonna do this again in about three weeks. After the eighteen.
Thanks.
So this is a one-day event?
Yes, sir.
Whoever doesn't come on this day can't come get their first shot, uh, a month from today or a month from Saturday and say, hey, where's, where's my hundred-dollar gift card? I mean, I'm, I'm happy that they would come get a shot, but are we gonna close off the, this panel of citizens, uh, to those who come for this event Saturday, and we're not gonna take, you know, new patients who wanna get their first shot during their second event?
Yes, they, they, they will be eligible to come to the second event.
So people who are coming for their first shot on the second event will get a hundred-dollar gift card, but there will be no reward for their second vaccination?
There will be. Yes, sir.
No. No, 'cause we're not, we, I mean, how many, this is a, if this is a one-day event?
It's two days.
And a hundred people come?
It's, it's two, two days.
I know that, but what I'm saying is, if a hundred people come, that hundred people need to show up a month from now to get their second shot.
Yes.
So if we have a hundred and twenty show up at the second event, those twenty that didn't get vaccinated the first time and are here for their first shot, uh, are they going to be eligible for a hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
And then two, how are we gonna track them to get them their second shot and incentivize them, or are they just gonna be out of luck because they didn't show up the first time?
Whoever shows up and is eligible for a shot will receive a hundred dollars at, at, at both events.
Well, I think, I, I think that's a little bit, a little bit hairy because the biggest incentive is to get two shots in the arm, right? There, there's no, you know, halfway efficacy, efficacy that's really been shown. So I think we need to ensure that whoever shows up Saturday, um, is able to get their second shot when we have that event because we're basing the amount of resources we apply to that second event on the number of people who show up for the first event. Now, if we wanna have a little secondary table for people who wanna come get their, uh, first shot at the second event, um, I'm, I'm scared that those people are gonna show up because all their friends say, man, I got a hundred-dollar gift card. I'm going back to get my second hundred-dollar gift card in a month, and they're like, oh dang, I missed it. I'll go get my first shot a month from now, and then they're gonna get a hundred-dollar gift card, and they're not gonna follow up on their second shot because there's no incentive for it, right? So that's my fear, and so I think we need to make the incentive aligned with the people who show up for this event and get in the queue, uh, this event, and they get, they're eligible for another hundred-dollar gift card when they show up for their second, but nobody else is. If you don't show up the first time, you don't get an incentive because there's no way for us to follow up, and I think too many people will show up for a hundred-dollar gift card and never show up for their second shot. And that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. I mean, I got a panel of experts here. Y'all tell me what, how y'all feel about that. I'm just trying to think about the psychology of incentivizing people to do something.
So I think that if we can incentivize someone to get one shot, that's better than no shot.
Yes.
And so if, if we had people that came to the second event, they had not received a shot and they received one hundred dollars, um, you know, that's all we're offering for the incentive. They'll be given, uh, uh, the date that they should get their second shot, but if they never did, that's still, that's one shot. That's sixty-six percent effective. It bumps up to ninety-eight percent with the initial vaccines of effectiveness. So, uh, one shot's better than no shots.
Can I make a comment here?
Yeah, oh, yeah, Commissioner.
I don't think we need to get too bogged down with trivial, with, with trivia, letting the dime hold up the dollar here. We got folks out here who are taking, who, who are taking ivamix and, uh, shot, uh, uh, warming, de-warming medication that I used as a young agent in Alabama to de-warm cows and horses when I was showing, when the kids were showing. And, and this is a problem that I have. Uh, if we can, if we can get these folks, like you just said, if we can get these folks to take one shot, I'm not worried about the dollar amount because of the fact that what's happening now is, uh, is, uh, is, is this virus is trickling down and it killing, it's killing our children and adults. As adults, we should, uh, be on the lookout and for the safety of our children. And this thing just went through, uh, went through my wife's cousin's house last week, and, uh, on, on, uh, Sunday, we lost one of our family members. So this thing is, this thing is for real, and I don't want you to be looking at the dime holding up the dollar here because the most important thing that we have going here and all over America is that we save some lives and we, and especially our children. And being a youth development person for so many years, worked with over fifty thousand young folks here in Dordie County, it, it saddens my heart when I look on TV and see that a child has passed away because some, because his parents got politics involved with, with safety. Because when it gets down to politics, and this is why we're here in the shape that we're in now, because of the fact that when it comes down to politics, we get, we, we get two things confused. We have those two, two, these two different things here. We got those who become for and those who become against, and that's what's happened here. So certainly, uh, I, I commend you. I tip my hat to you all for coming up with this idea and, uh, spend the money. I mean, if we're gonna save a child's life, it's gonna save anybody's life. I mean, we can't use it if it's not spent. Let's spend the money. I think it's a great cause.
Well, keep in mind, I mean, the Pfizer vaccine's only indicated down to patients age, what, sixteen and up? Twelve, okay, good, so.
What's that now?
Age twelve and up. So about half our kids can't get vaccinated.
I understand that, and I know the rules of that, but then these parents who, who takes the virus into their homes and kill kids, that's what I'm talking about, Commissioner Gray. I understand who can get it and who can't get it, but if you got, how it got in our relatives, I was one of, one of, one of the adults brought it in because of the fact. Now, everybody wanna get a shot, but it's too late.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I know the rules of the game.
Well, it doesn't reduce transmission. Vaccinations don't ultimately rule out your ability to transmit the virus to other people.
And we understand that too, but we do know that vaccine, but we do know that if you take a vaccine, it'll keep, it'll keep you out of the hospital. It'll, it'll keep you from dying. That's the main thing. That's the main point that I'm trying to drive home.
Right. But your point was about sharing it from an adult to a child in the home. That can still happen.
Well, it can, it can, but like you said, but if that person is vaccinated, he won't, he, you won't have to worry about that problem, but I'm not gonna debate you on that.
No, yeah, no, 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 no. My point is vaccinations don't prevent you from transmitting. If I go get vaccinated and, and I, uh, get sick with it, uh, I can still transmit it to my, anybody in my house, vaccinated or not.
And, and I know that, but you trans, if somebody in that house gets it, it, it is not like you don't have a shot.
Right. It's protection against severe disease.
That's what I'm saying, and I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want. I just want to appreciate the work that you all have done. Um, I know it's been against some terrible odds in this community, but, uh, I just appreciate you all so much. I know that this is hard work to do. I know it's hard both, uh, from a physical, uh, health standpoint as well as an emotional standpoint. Uh, so I appreciate this program, and I look forward to, uh, it, uh, kicking that number up to seventy-five. I look forward to the seventy-five percent. So thank you all very much for what you do.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Newsom?
Couple of questions. Um, you said that, uh, one of y'all said that the vaccination could, uh, go to twelve-year-olds? So are we opening it up to twelve and above?
Yes. The only people that will get the debit card would have to be eighteen.
Okay, but the, but the children can get vaccinated?
Yes.
But they don't get the card?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, uh, I don't think this program's broad enough. Uh, if you're looking at it, say you do three thousand people. I think we need to open it up more and, and schedule more dates to do this, uh, before it's gonna make a difference. That's my opinion. Uh, it, you know, obviously, right now, we're looking at three hundred-something thousand, but if you do, you know, three thousand of these in, in two times, then you're not scratching the dent in that three thou- that three hundred thousand. If we're gonna put that kinda money up, let's open it up. Let's get more dates, and let's get more people vaccinated. Uh, I'm not against, uh, I'm, I'm not against doing this. Uh, I just don't think it's broad enough. Uh, I, I don't see you making an impact, uh, with that, with that kinda people, and I, I don't know that you'd get fifteen hundred. So it may be a little bit more of a longer process than, so I'd say we take it further and, and e- extend our dates out, and if we can do twelve, twelve and up, I think that's great. Uh, and that would be my thing. I, I've got nothing against vaccinations. I, you know, my whole family's vaccinated, and almost everybody in this room probably is vaccinated. Uh, I got no problem. Uh, but if we're gonna make a difference, I think we need to expand this program, being that we have, we're gonna allot this kinda money to do it, and let's spend all the money to do it.
Question, please.
Yes, Commissioner Gang?
Is the city participating in, in this effort?
Yes, the city is a partner, but the county will be the sponsor, underwriter for the incentive.
So they're not, the city's not contributing any of the funds, any funds?
No.
Well, they will be contributing by, uh, making the Civic Center available, uh, providing, uh, police officers for security and, and traffic control and, uh, other any kind of services. But they are a full partner.
Any more comments?
Just, uh, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against it. I just wanna make sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck. If we have to spend all three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars at this event, that would be a wildly successful problem to have, and I agree with Commissioner Newsom that it would probably weren't looking at additional, um, additional dates because there is a demand, and maybe we found what the sweet spot is from an incentive standpoint to get those who are on the fence about it, uh, across that fence and get them vaccinated. So, you know, I think we look at the success of this first turnout, and if we have ten people turn out, I don't think we need to go ahead and add additional dates and commit resources, but, uh, if we have everybody who we hope would turn out, um, we're gonna have a big prob- uh, you know, a good problem on our hands, then we can certainly look at, um, coordinating additional events. Maybe the city can foot the bill for the next one.
Right.
Good luck.
Yeah, sounds good. I guess I'll just throw my little two cent in. Um, I guess I have a challenge with it because, um, you can go get the shot free.
Right.
Anywhere. You can go to the Health Department on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, I, as one commissioner, I think it's a wonderful idea. I look at it as a form, to me, uh, coercion. Uh, we looking at, I think, we, we throwing some dangling people that they have a right. End of the week, go get the shot. What I don't wanna happen from another perspective, not against this particular situation at all. Um, like Commissioner Newsom said, Commissioner Russell just stated, if I get the shot the first time, that's a hundred dollars. If I come back again, that's another hundred dollars. That's seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that we as a board has continued to say, what are we are going to do with our ARP money? Now, Commissioner Gang stated, is the city participating? The city is not participating. They spent their ten million dollars on storm drainage. Before, uh, last month, we took how much, Mr. McCoy, from our raises, from our ARP money? Uh, I'm real, I'm real serious about this ARP money because I want it invested in the community and not saying I'm totally against. I want everybody's life to be saved. But I know from experience, I continue to nibble off my eight million dollars, and I have not put any money where I know it should do in investing for another area. So again, I remember when we first started talking about this ARP money, how difficult it was to find and understand, um, what's the criteria, and I continue to see, we continue to come up with these criterias that actually fit the recommendations of my staff, and we still have not sat down as a board and said which direction we wanna go with our ARP money. Now, I understand what Commissioner Newsom's saying. It is a broader range, and I still think like, um, some kinks need to be worked out, but I feel as one commissioner, you go anywhere you like and get the shot free.
I'm a same commissioner, and I agree with you, sir.
So I shouldn't have to dangle a hundred dollars in front of anybody. To, to me, that's a form of coercion. So, I mean, that's my stand on it. I appreciate all the work that, uh, each one of you guys have done, as well as my county administrator, uh, but I don't see why should I have to pay for something that people can already get free.
I agree with you completely, sir.
And if nobody have any more comments?
I do. I wanna say that I believe in the vaccinations. I believe they're great, but I'm not going to get in the business of legislating or trying to push legislation to people's morals. If you wanna get the shot, it's your opportunity to do it. If they don't wanna get the shot, it's their opportunity not to. And I do feel like similar to what he said about it being a form of coercion. Great job on the ad program, great job in getting in front of people, great job reminding people to step up to the plate and do what's right. Keep that up. That's a really, really, really good program, Strive for Seventy-Five, but I'm, I'm against paying somebody to get a shot.
Uh, one.
Yes, and then after all, well, I can't do that, but Commissioner Gang?
I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, well, I, I, I do appreciate what you all are saying, the both of you. However, I do see it differently, and that is from an economic standpoint, and, uh, that is, that, that is pushing more money into the community, and that's what we need. Uh, we need more money in circulation, and that helps the economy. So, uh, I, I, I mean, I think it's a fairly good use of the money. That was the whole intent of the, um, uh, program really, to push it into, uh, impoverished, impoverished communities. That was the whole intent of the program, really, to push it into impoverished communities like ours and get more money circulating. It is an economic theory that says that if you get more money out there circulating, the better it is for the economy. So, I, I, I see it from two different perspectives.
And I, I can appreciate your standpoint. I appreciate your standpoint, but you have your opinion about it. You have your opinion about it, and I understand it. I have my opinion about it, and it's different, so.
Yes, yes. I'm just giving mine.
Okay.
I wasn't challenging yours at all. I'm just saying that there is an economic theory out there that says that you have people spending money. They may take that money and go spend it, and they will go spend that money. And that's the whole idea, to get it into impoverished communities like ours, so that you get more money circulating, which is an accepted economic theory everywhere. If you can get money in the hands of poor people, they're going to spend it. And that helps the economy, and that was the whole idea, because if the money stays up at the top, it doesn't get spent, and it doesn't help the community. And that was the whole point of the rescue plan. That was part of it. To push money down into community like ours.
And to that, and to that point, to that end, remove vaccinations and just give everybody a hundred dollars. Just remove, remove the vaccination part of it and give everybody a hundred bucks.
Well, you know, I, I accept and understand your objection to it, you know, but I'm just citing an economic theory that supports it.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, and I think that we have a healthy community. That's the most important thing for us from where, we have a healthy community, because all the statistics point back to people who are not taking vaccines. Those are the ones who are getting sick and dying. That's what the statistics tell me, but I, I just think that it's no, nothing different than what we are doing here is for folks that to give a rebate on a car, you know, they give, they give incentives on that as well. DeKalb County, they're tooting their horn, they're tooting their horn right now because of the fact that they've already started this thing already. They started a couple of weeks ago, and they had these, the same program that we are trying to get off the ground today. DeKalb County, they, I, I read an article from the, from the Georgia Association of County Commissioners, that they are just as happy about this thing as it is. So I, I think we need to get on board with this thing, but we'll vote it up or down regardless.
Again, I'll close, I guess, the discussion on this particular topic.
I just had one, one point. On your math, it's not going to cost us seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is enough budgeted to do sixteen hundred and ninety patients. So that's sixteen hundred and ninety at a hundred bucks a piece times two.
Right.
Right? So we're not doubling the budget just because they're getting two shots. We budgeted three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That'll cover six, one thousand six hundred and ninety people getting both shots.
Okay. That's that three hundred and thirty-eight.
That's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
But that's not the two hundred dollars per person?
That's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand divided by two, which is per, you know, per shot divided by a hundred dollars.
And then if you, I mean, I'm not going to, I mean, I appreciate that, but again, my whole point was, here I am again, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, being very presumptuous, making preparation before you brought it to the table, understanding that we are going to vote for it and not having that discussion. Now, I am, one commissioner, disappointed in that.
In, in what?
In what I just said about this A R P money.
In, in what way?
Well, I'm not going, what I just said, this is the second time being presumptuous that the commission is going to vote again for this three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. When we voted, what, two weeks ago, if all the six hundred and fifty employees get it, that was a hundred and ninety-five. We continue to nibble off this A R P money, and I want, and so my county administrators being presumption of bringing things to us without actually coming to us. Now, there is nothing to do with that. So what I'm going to do now, Russell, I'm going to end this because it is a different piece. So now we're going, like, like Commissioner Jones said, we're going to vote it up, but we're going to vote it down. That's what we do. Now, if there's no any more discussion on it, that's it. You got your numbers good, we good, it's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
But I think there still is discussion.
No, we, I'm through with it. So let's close and go to the next agenda, if you don't mind.
Whatever you want.
Okay. Now, we really appreciate you guys taking the time this morning and sharing, you know, your position. We really appreciate it, and we really, and thank you for taking time this morning. We'll go on to the next item. B, Simone Turner, Regional Program Manager, Communities and Schools of Georgia, present to provide an update to the commission on the program and to request a partnership. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We appreciate you.
Thank you for having me. All right. Yes, my name is Simone Turner, Regional Program Manager for Communities and Schools. This is the proposal to the Dorie County Board of Commissioners to expand C I S services in Dorie County schools. Our request, Communities and Schools are seeking financial investment from the Dorie County Board of Commissioners to expand services and increase the number of elementary school students receiving the C I S model in Dorie County schools. Who we are. We are the nation's largest and most effective organization dedicated to removing barriers that prevent students from succeeding, thus keeping them in school and putting them on a path for graduation and productive future. C I S has served the Albany-Dorie community since twenty eighteen nineteen school year. Our mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieving life. Our partners, we have, of course, the Dorie County School System, Albany State's Stronger Together Initiative, AmeriGroup, Family Literacy, the Albany-Dorie Youth Unit, the Albany Police Department, and several others' partners. What we do, our goal is to improve educational outcomes for all students. We accomplish this goal by mobilizing community resources, bringing them into the schools to address students' unmet needs. Our school-based site coordinators identify students at risk for not achieving their goal, assess their support needs, and provide them wraparound interventions and resources to change outcomes. Our wraparound services focus on A B C outcomes, increase attendance, we improve their behavior, and they have satisfactory coursework. Also engage in parents and families and supports of their students to help schools and students succeed. Our model, we target academic and non-academic barriers to achieve and provide wraparound supports in three tiers. Tier one is school-wide, tier two is ongoing groups, and tier three is case management. By differing these supports, we serve most students at schools and focus attention targeted that have significant needs. The program's resources and relationships seek to improve students' academic and life skills, reduce toxic stresses on students, and heals from existing trauma, build resiliency, and encourage responsibility. Our presence in Dorie County schools, C I S currently provides services in five of the lowest performing schools in the district. All of these schools' population have a high level of economic disadvantage. Ninety-nine percent receive free and reduced lunch. In total, we have three full-time site coordinators, one full-time serving three schools, Alice Coachman, Northside, Robert Harvey. With that particular site coordinator, she's only be, she's only able to serve one-third of her time at each school. We have one full-time site coordinator at M L K. We have one full-time site coordinator serving at Radiant Mills, and then myself, who seeks out resources to support these students. The funding, Dorie County School System provides twenty-four point nine percent of the cost. C I S of Georgia provides thirty-nine point five percent of the cost. C I S National Office provides eleven point three percent of the cost. And the Georgia Department of Education School Improvement provides twenty-eight point three percent. The challenges, C I S research shows that we are most effective when there is a full-time site coordinator. We currently have three high-need elementary students. As we stated, the pandemic has taken a toll on everyone. Our students are really being affected. Students in these elementary schools are struggling with the foundational core in reading and math. Students lack the skills at third grade and are at higher risk of dropping out of school. The reading and math proficiency in twenty nineteen, the data, Alice Coachman, nine point four percent in percent of students reading at a third grade level, and the student's proficiency in math was at twelve point one. M L K, fourteen point four for English. Northside, eighteen point nine, and then Robert Harvey, eleven point three percent. As far as math, Alice Coachman, twelve point one, ten point seven, nineteen point two, and fourteen point seven for Robert Harvey. They've been compounded by COVID. Since this pandemic, these numbers have gone up or gone down tremendously. What C I S and the Dorie County Board of Commissioners can do to help? An investment of eighty-two thousand five hundred from the Dorie County Board of Commissioners could expand services in these schools. With one full-time site coordinator, bringing, bringing account up to four full-time site coordinators, three half-time AmeriGroup providing tutoring to students in reading and math, it would cover twenty-six point two of the cost of site coordination and tutorial services. With Dorie County School System covering thirteen point two, a program in, in C I S of Georgia has secured sixty point six percent. What would the Board of Commissioners' investment do? It would increase the numbers of students on caseload by at least thirty-three percent with an additional site coordinator. It provides a support structure for students should schools have to close again, the increased availability of sources to meet the basic needs of students and families, provide one-on-one and small group tutorial services. We provide critical resources to families, not only to the children that we serve, but to their families after all. In twenty twenty, we served two hundred and forty-five students, case managed, total school, total students, two thousand three hundred and ninety-six, and whole school services, two thousand three hundred and ninety-six. We had an eighty-one percent progress in students who improved their academic. Seventy point seven improved their behavior, seventy-five point four improved their attendance. Ninety-four point three percent of our students were promoted to the next grade. We generated three hundred and eighty volunteers and engaged one thousand three hundred and fifty-five parents. The importance of this early intervention should pay off economically for the Dorie County Commission. C I S released the results of the Economic Impact Study conducted by E M S one, I mean, E M S I, one of the nation's leading economic modeling firms. The purpose of the study was to quantify the return of investment of a hundred and thirteen high schools serving C I S affiliates. The average annual rate of return society is eighteen point four. The benefit cost ratio is eleven point six, which means that every dollar invested in C I S creates eleven dollars and sixty cents of economic benefit to the community. High school graduates will be net contributors to their communities by the average age of forty-four. We hope that the Board of Commissioners will join us as a partner in improving outcomes of students in Dorie County.
Thank you. Any comment from the commission?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Commissioner Johnson?
So if, if, if you're, you're asking for eighty, how much was it? Eighty-two-five?
Eighty-two-five, yes, sir.
And that's for one school year? That's for one school year?
Yes, sir.
And that, and by employing that one person, the impact is to bring another person in to help deal with the tutoring or case management?
Correct. By adding another site coordinator to the schools that we currently serve, we are, then, we would be able to, because one site coordinator currently has three schools. With her serving three schools, she's only there one-third of the time. At one particular school, with the higher needs, the, the data I presented, then we would allow her to be at one particular school to serve a numerous number of students in order to help that school. Quite often what takes place is she may be at one school, but there's a need at another. And so it cuts down the time that she has at a particular school to work with the student who is at high risk. And then by having another employee, another site coordinator, they can manage that. So many students have been affected by this pandemic. We see all too often kids coming to school, having COVID, parents knowing that they have COVID, sending the kids to school. There's a lot of resources that are needed, and so we connect those. The schools are really great. We love the schools that we serve. And even with that, families may need support. So if it's a matter of us taking school packets to the, to the, to the home, or making sure that they have their laptops, or getting them some soup or a basket in order to help the family, you know, hand sanitizers in order for them to get well. There's so many different dynamics in the services. If it's after-school tutoring, because students are at a high right now. And so the type of support that we offer our case-managed students is free after-school tutoring to help them get on track so that they can continue their education, so that they can understand what is taking place.
So, so the goal is to bring the community into the schools, not just the school board or the government, but to bring the entire community into the school to help. So is there another fundraising campaign going on to try to raise this privately, or?
So what happens, part of, part of my job is to assist with fundraising. Right now, I haven't initially, like, had a fundraiser, but we have had donations. Trent Brown, who's a resident, or who was a prior resident who plays for the N F L, donated to our organization, Community School in Albany. We have different people who donate, who sponsor different things for the students. But as far as, it's all about the community, and we know that if we get the county commissioners on board to help with the cost, again, it would be more of a four or five-way cost comparison. The data show, you know, C I S of Georgia, the Dorie County School System, the Dorie County Commissioners, C I S National, and then the cost comparison in what you would get with having an AmeriGroup tutor.
Okay. But I, I did receive a proposal last, last year.
Okay.
Talking about this, and I think it is worth a little bit more discussion, but I think it's something we kind of have to dive into and really understand how it really can be an impact.
It would. It would. The investment would really, really be an impact to the students that we serve. So many students suffer from mental health needs, so not only do we, again, refer students to mental health services, we ensure that they get those services. We connect those services. Say for instance, if a mother has transportation issues, we would bring the mother to the school. We would have the therapist come to the school. We would complete the session. So it's not just a one-stop. Or just tell, you know, send someone in a direction because we know that that's a good need, a great need. We would connect them with those resources and continue to follow them.
Another question? I guess I'll ask Mr. McCoy. Mr. McCoy, have you researched if, I guess with further discussion, would the county commission have the funding to, have you researched that?
I'll be more than happy to research whether or not we have the available funding if the board wants to move forward with looking into this request.
So I guess I would ask the commission, do y'all want Mike to come back with a recommendation?
It makes sense to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Mr. McCoy would, you know, research, come back to the commission and give us a recommendation on, you know, what role we would like to play in it? And is that okay, Commissioner Lewis? Okay. Well, if you'd like to add anything else in closing?
Not only are we, you know, working with the elementary schools, we work with the middle school as well and the high school. We, we had a partnership that started in January with students. We assisted Marrow High in which they were unable to find students. So we were able to find those students and help those students so that they could graduate. There were three students that actually graduated with our program. And we're also working with teen parents, both male and female now, in partnership with Stronger Together in Albany State. Our focus is teen journey, with these teen parents with the completion of their high school education and to delay additional premises. While simultaneously strengthening their connection with their children, families and the community. That is something that just recently started within the past month. But thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate you for bringing us this information and again, taking the time to come this morning. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is our very own EDC President, Jana Dyke with the Albany-Dorothy Economic Development Commission to present an update on the commission on her quarter report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. In an effort to be mindful of the time request, just want to provide a quick update to each of you as to where we are and kind of some of the activities that we have going on at the EDC office. We continue to receive information for projects in our community. We are somewhat limited on inventory. Several of these projects have been food specific. And because we do not have coolers in our kitchen areas, we have not been able to submit some information for that. In addition to that, we do have several prospects that will be in town. As a matter of fact, this week we have two prospects that will be in town, working on various projects here. Hopefully, we'll be able to secure those in the area. In addition to that, we are continuing to work on our website. We look to have that launch within the next three weeks. It took a little longer than we anticipated, but that was because we needed to get out and get some good photography of the industries as well as in the community. And with all the COVID restrictions, we've been limited to getting into facilities. So hope to have that launch within the next three weeks and really excited about this website. And the company is equally excited. They look forward to having our website as one that they can feature showing to other communities as well. I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. McCoy and thank our planning and zoning offices because without the information that they share and provide us, we couldn't submit this information to the website. We couldn't submit this information to these prospects. And just having partners like that, that we can just pick up the phone and call. And even US Commissioners are very open and that's what makes it easy to do what we do. So I do want to take the time to do that in an open meeting and thank the partnerships that we have because they are very valuable. In addition to that, we have a new staff member, Ms. London Polite has come to our office. She is an intern. She comes and works in the morning with us. She is a student at Four C Academy and also a student at Dorton High. We're very excited to have Ms. Polite coming on board. She is sixteen years old and this is her first job. So she is learning a lot about what happens in the community and we're glad to be able to provide her this opportunity. We continue to work with our existing businesses, just touching bases with them, giving them the attention that they so deserve as members of our community. And are finding out as we have these conversations that the workforce issue is a continued conversation for every organization and finding the needed employees that everyone has. We're working with our educational partners, both at the high school and collegiate level to submit applications for all this funding that's available so that we can develop workforce programs to help educate the workforce as far as savings and different things that are available. One of our business partners, South Point Staffing, has been working with UGA. And we look forward to partnering with them on some of the programs that they have offerings to the workforce. And then we also are working with Four C Academy and the Dorton County School System to bring the educators into our industries and let them see the skill sets that are needed so that they can take that and implement that back into the classrooms. Because had I known, as I told the business community the other day, had I known the value and importance of reading the tape measure or ruler, how it would apply later on in my life, I might would have paid a little more attention to that. So, you know, just taking those applicable skills that we need in the workforce and showing that to the students and to the educators and how that ties into our community. But again, we just thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve each of you and the residents in this community. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Just, just one point.
Commissioner Gagnon?
I'm curious about something.
You don't have to ask, answered. It may be a little bit askew, you know, from what you do or even your understanding. Do we, what I have observed is that our, at the collegiate level, we train people who then have to leave the community to find the jobs that they are trained for. And I hear you saying that the workforce is not developed for the jobs that are available, but we have people who have to leave. So I don't know, it just seems to me there's a mismatch there somehow in, in that at the collegiate level, we train them and they go elsewhere and take their knowledge and training somewhere else. That's been experienced in my family and in the entire community, they leave. So somehow the, the, the jobs that are available are not matching what we are training students for. And I don't know how, how you do that. I don't know where that right balance is.
Yes, ma'am. So we are working with both ASU and Albany Tech to ensure that we have a pipeline of the skill sets that are needed. Unfortunately, it doesn't matter how much we train some people, they're just not going to go to work. And that's kind of where our workforce is right now.
They're not going to do what?
They're not going to go to work. We have a large number of people that are not working in our community. And so we can offer whatever training that is available and Albany Tech does.
Saying that they are trained, but they don't want to work? But they are trained?
There are, yes, ma'am. They have education and they're not going to work. We have over, I can't remember the exact number, but it was much higher than it should be as far as those that are not going to work and are able to go to work every day. And so what we're doing to work with that is we're training, what we're taking is we're taking the classes that are available at Albany Tech, how they bridge over to Albany State and what type of pipeline that we have so that we can ensure that our educational partners are training for the jobs that are needed. Albany Tech has been phenomenal at creating programs for whatever we've needed in the past and continue to be a great partner. Unfortunately, we do lose a lot of our population to Atlanta. A lot of the students at ASU are already from Atlanta, so they're going back home. There are a lot of people such as myself who moved away, but I've come back home. We've got to create an environment to encourage others to come back home. And unfortunately, when the negative stories get out more often than the positive stories, which we all know are happening every day, that is a turnoff for people that are looking at coming back. So we just have to be a little more vigilant in the information that we share that's a positive so that people will see that we've got some great things happening here.
Ms. Dyke, can you speak more to, I think something that came up early on when you were in effort to bring you back to Albany about workforce development and when you start to ask children about the kind of jobs they want? Can you kind of speak more into that?
Yes, sir. So we definitely are, as we can, getting involved with the schools. And, you know, again, COVID has somewhat restricted us to that. But we are trying to interact with the school systems to find out what the jobs are that the kids would like to have. You know, what do they see our community looking like? What type of retail facilities would they like to have? Because the younger we get their buy-in, the more they're going to feel a part of the community. And if they're a part of this planning process, we want to kind of have that rapport with the students and the younger generation here. So we have been working to do that. And, you know, there are some really high pie in the sky things that are desired and then there are some that we can definitely obtain. A lot of what we have to do internally as a community is provide the infrastructure for the jobs that are needed. When COVID hit, a lot of us had to go home and go to work. Broadband was an issue. A lot of students couldn't do the schoolwork because they didn't have access to broadband. So through these grants that are coming down, those are some of the initiatives that we're looking to capture so that we can indeed have the infrastructure in place for the jobs to keep the people here and to help better educate the students.
So could there be a, did I cut you off? Did I cut you off? Could, could there be a partial blend with the young lady who came before you? Some alternative communities and schools in EDC working together, helping her to raise funds, which she may not know how to do. You may be perfect at doing it or getting a buy-in from the business community to help her in, in her efforts to bring in, I guess, kind of what you're talking about doing, but at the same time, working together to, to, to help her achieve her goals.
Yes, sir.
With, with the broadband, that is one of the major number one priorities of this commission, of DCA, of the federal government. Of course, the ARP, we keep talking about the buying books. A part, a great, a large part of that is all tied into broadband. And so we are, we would be working diligently to help you and the community with that broadband initiative.
Yes, sir. So in response to the partnerships, I think what we have in every other community, just to be very frank, is we have a disconnect with each person doing different things. How do we bring everybody together so that we can all build off of each other and the strengths that are being, you know, the services that are being offered? Because you've got the YMCA that would be a great partner with that and some other organizations that are kind of complementing the work that's already being done. So we can definitely help serve as a conduit to help connect others.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, one final comment. Back to the mismatch between how we educate at the collegiate level and the jobs that are available to support them. Albany, the, the one thing we have heard for many years, and it was true even when I was graduating here, is that a student who graduates from Albany State has a degree in one hand and a ticket in the other. And that's what we need to try to stop. And I don't know whether or not they are educating folks. But, you know, the state certainly controls the curriculum a lot more than we do, you know. And I don't know how they determine what curriculum Albany State has. Whether or not they train for a more global perspective than a local perspective. But at least they ought to have some understanding of the community that the students are coming from and what those needs are there so that they can retain some of the resources that are invested in, in those students. So to build a community. And I don't know how you do that. I just don't know how you do it. But we have to see both sides of that coin because we too often say that we have students. We have people who are not, who don't want to work or who were not trained properly. But we, the other side of the coin is that we have very well-trained people who leave. So I, I just, I just hate to see us talk so much about that one side of the coin.
Yes, ma'am.
That we've got folks who don't want to work, we've got folks who are not trained. But we also have them who are very well-trained, who, who just can't find anything here in this community because of the kind of economic base that we have is not broad enough. So I, I certainly would like to see us work on retaining those that we trained well.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I think one thing that we need to do and do more of is, as, as we try to keep our kids in the community. Because like you said, when, when they graduate, they got a ticket in one hand and a degree in the other hand. They head to big city in bright lights. But, but I think what's going to have to happen here, based on my experience in youth development, is that what you need to do is when these, when these young folks are, are young, like this sixteen-year-old that you have in your office as an intern, we're going to have to create more internship for these young folks so that they can, so that they can have someone like a Jana Dykes that says, "Look, Albany's economic development or whatever umbrella that you're going to be talking, we, we need you here. We need you here" because you, 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 you train up a child the way you want him to be. And certainly if we had more internships from Miller, P&amp;G, just of our local kids, just letting them come during the summer. And that's one of the things that we mentioned here at this commission table when one of the, I think it was the human resources had, had room for one person to come in. So if you don't train children about what's here in Albany, once they get out, but they, you know, they read about what's in Atlanta and they're going to take off. So that's what, we're going to have to do a better job of tooting our own horn and putting internships in for the young kids when they're growing up, sixteen years, sixteen-year-old, time to do it right then. And certainly we'd probably be able to keep more of our kids in the community. Otherwise, they're going to take flight.
And we're working on that to, to develop more. Of course, he has a straight, a strong program, but the employment opportunities are something that we're working on. Unfortunately, a lot of the manufacturers do have age restrictions because of the equipment and the things that are on their floor. So as we've contacted the employers, trying to find out what their needs were for employment, we've also asked the age and what type of skills are needed, if there's an opportunity to upskill, if the skills are not in place, and how we can help better partner. So we're trying to gather all of that information and formulate a program, Commissioner.
But that would be more or less under that Four C. I thought that's what the Four C Academy was for. They, they should be the ones on the ground. Job Corps, Job Corps, we got Job Corps there. They do work experience instructing, or on the job training, putting these kids, placing these kids in the community. I got a wealth of knowledge about youth development. I mean, those are the folks, not so much you, but those folks are the ones that, that should be playing the lead role in, in keeping these kids in the community.
Any other, Commissioner, Commissioner Ross?
I just had a question for you, just for public consumption. What are some of the jobs or skill sets that are in most demand in our community right now? So if people are sitting at home with certain skill sets and they don't know that there are jobs that match their skill sets, what, what are some of the jobs and skilled positions out there that employers in our community are looking to fill most?
The most common is entry-level-based employment. They, a lot of our employers find that training, once they get in-house, is the best form of training because each organization runs differently. Obviously, we do have some of those that are specific trainings that are needed that would be more of your management-type skill set. But the entry-level jobs are the ones that often go unfilled. And there's no prerequisites necessarily. They just want people that would come back after lunch.
Gotcha. Thank you. There's no further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you for taking the time. Next on the agenda, Mr. William Wright, DBA, Afrim Tech, present to continue presentation on subsequently analysis of intervening issues in nine metro counties in the state of Georgia as compatible to Dorton County. Good morning, Mr. Wright.
Greetings to you and good morning. We've had a long morning, so get ready to make it longer. But a couple of things, you have the document before you, you got a legal section scheduled. So we'll come back on, I think it'll be the twenty-seventh because it's easy to blow time. But we have to make sure it is productive. Two short things I'll just bring to your attention. You're going into a legal section, but back on August twenty-seventh. You're going into a legal section, but back on August 27th, we invited all of you to come to the Golden Jubilee Tri-Factor. That is, there were three monumental tasks, as well as the legal claim that's probably before you today to look at. But let me point out on, uh, your handout, one of the things to look at, uh, on page three, that's one of the fundamental things that you're going to be talking about. You were discussing about jobs and everything. Well, what happened? We are basically smallville, you know, that's the city that Superman lived in. So people don't come here because we don't have the catalyst. And the same thing is applicable in the job market. You see, when you get a, after spending 35 years in public education, I know a little bit about it. When you get a liberal arts degree, it means just that. It means you can go and work in 20 or 30 different classifications. That's why they call it liberal. You're not going to become a doctor or get a specialty. It's just like, if you look downtown, the reason downtown cannot come back is because the people are trying to do it to not understand the dynamics. Land, labor, and capital is what drives GDP, growth to market product. If you look on page three, you see the last incident on there, the disparity filing study. Seven years ago, when the Honorable Chris Cohitis, uh, came on this commission, one of the things, uh, you instructed to do was to put in place minority business program. Seven years later, nothing has happened. And if you look on there, the last incident on there is no longer existing, Albany Tomorrow. There is no more Albany Tomorrow. Why? Because people come here and they give us, uh, something like Houdini. Tell us things going to happen and anybody within a sense knows what's not going to happen because they are clueless. You know, Harry Houdini was an expert in misdirection. He'll have you looking at an elephant when he's got the doors dropping out of there. And that's what happened with Albany. Albany Tomorrow said they were going to redevelop the city of Albany. And for 10 years, the only thing they spent was political money. When that political money left, they left. And we told them, just like we told you seven years ago, you were culpable because you're not part. When we hit the Golden Tri-Factor on August 27th, we explained all these things. We were talking about the 58th anniversary of the March on Washington, which led to the creation of 1964 Civil Rights Act, which is the basis, one of the basis of the lawsuit that you're going to be discussing later on. All right, that was the 58th anniversary of March on Washington. It's the 57th anniversary of 1964 Civil Rights Act and the 56th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act. So you had all three, and we showed you how, that there was only nine people that showed up. So we'll come back on the, uh, the 27th. And when you really want to get serious, if you look at the, uh, the last page, well, look at page six. One of the things that shows you, I remember when the young lady came over here. Well, that's the, uh, that's the budget of the Dougherty County School System. You know, the federal government gave them $100 million? Look at, look at the middle of the page, you see that budget is more than the city and the county combined. $330 million for 13,000 students. That tells me that something is wrong with that. See, $100 million because our students are so far behind. That's ARP money, $100 million they never got before. So that's what I want you to see. We need to understand what is going on with these dynamics so we can better deal with it. And the thing is, when you look at what is there, the answer is not necessarily simple, but it means that we have to be proactive and understand that if you've got a liberal arts degree and you understand the dynamics, we do not have enough industry, that's our real problem. Industry and housing are the only two things that have a catalyst effect because they affect almost everything. Three years ago, you had a ship there in, what was it, Brunswick, Georgia? They had a ship called the Golden Ray. You know, that ship had 4,200 Nissan on it. Every time you buy a foreign car, it takes seven jobs out of U.S. economy. So that means we lost 42,000 jobs on the Golden Ray right there in Brunswick, where really it's available. Because we do not understand the dynamic. That's the same thing happened to ATI. People are going to do everything as long as political money is involved. So no one is investing, and then the people who are making decisions are clueless and let's not lie. We were told that when we built the Hilton Hotel, it's going to change. We were told if we build all these treasures, it's going to change. What happened? We lose 12,000, 12,000 citizens in a 10-year period. So we'll come back on the, uh, 27th. If you get serious, my email address is on there, email me, and we'll respond to questions about the case that's before United States District Court. Any other questions, because you could have gotten the information that you have come to the Golden Tri-Factor on August 27th, because we discussed the nine people that did show up. We discussed all these things, so there ain't a question. We're not going to waste the time. That's why we're in court now. It's just too much, too much mess that people are clueless, do not want to do anything, and then they bring somebody here to tell them anything and they believe it. See, you, you've got to have a catalyst to draw people here. We don't have a 75 or 85 or 16 or 20, so always both people get here, they get a traffic ticket. Okay, what you do? And every time you look at P&amp;G, you look at Miller, what are they doing? They're not trying to create more jobs, they're trying to downsize, eliminate jobs with robotics and pneumatics. People out there in education 35 years, about the same time operating a small business. So if you get serious and want to do something about it, you know, email me. Is there any question?
Any questions from the commission? Again, Mr. Wright, we appreciate you enlightening us on different areas, and we know you're going to continue to come and keep us enlightened.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that, because you all, one of the things you've got to discuss today is the 1964 Civil Rights Act deals with equal opportunity. One of the things you are discussing at closed session, you cannot continue to give somebody $600 an hour to do bookkeeping, like the young lady that Ms. Van Dack was talking about. You cannot just give somebody $100,000 because of fear. So if you get serious, email.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next, uh, on the agenda, number seven, zoning. The public hearing, those wishing to speak on these matters should print their name. Uh, Madam Clerk, did anybody have any names signed up? Okay. Hey, good morning, Ms. Angel.
Good morning.
All right.
Uh, Chairman, Commissioners, McCoy, Mr. Lee. We are here today with, uh, case number 21047. Mr. Travis Hellman has applied for rezoning of an ag property to, uh, 10 acres of a 53, let me get that number for you, 53.95 acre tract to RE. Uh, his purpose for requesting this before the Planning Commission, and I don't know what I did, is so that he could, uh, sell the 10 acres of the developed parcel to a long-term tenant. Um, the Planning Commission heard our case and has recommended to you all, uh, approval of this application. The address is 3916 Gravel Hill Road. As you'll see here, this is the intent for, uh, subdividing the parcel by the applicant. This is an aerial view. The applicant requests that the official zoning map of Dougherty County be amended to rezone 10 acres, as I said, as a 53.95 acre ag to RE, which is the real estate district. The applicant and owner is here today, Mr. Travis Hellman. And the address again is 3916 Gravel Hill Road. The parcel has two developed homesites, uh, and approximately 50% of the parcel is located in a floodway. This is the floodway map. Records show that the 53.95 residentially developed lot has maintained its original zoning designation and the adjacent properties to the north, south, east, and west also retain their original zoning designations. This is a zoning map to show you the area zoning. There are parcels within the area that have been rezoned. These parcels are not adjacent lot lines. The areas to the south and southwest, southeast, along Gravel Hill and Ozdale Williams Road, they have rezonings from agriculture to RG8 and from ag to R1 and from ag to RMHS, residential, to the mobile home, single-family residential district. Future land use, or excuse me, the current use of the properties, you'll see that most agriculture and almost every property there has some type of residential use. Staff and applicant discussed the rezoning designation of RE as it would be more suitable and restricted to maintain the area's agricultural characteristics and be more restricted to maintain, um, that ambiance and character. And it also suits the applicant's intent, uh, to subdivide and sell to his long-term tenant. Mostly adjacent and nearby properties are used agriculturally and many have single-family dwellings. The RE district designation results in a use more suitable to the area view of development of adjacent properties. Uh, the larger lots required by the RE would better serve the rural character of the location. Future land use, of course, recommends agricultural use. The recommended rezoning does not conform with the future land use map. The future, uh, land use map recommends agricultural forestry, um, use. But the RE designation recommended isn't inconsistent with the land use recommendations. However, the use for residential is allowed in ag, and there is agricultural use already. The RE designation is, again, is more restrictive with a 10-acre minimum, uh, lot size, and it would be more suitable for the area. The RE designation allows for single-family dwellings and discourages any land use that would generate traffic or on minor roads used to service residential traffic, which aligns with the 2026 plan. The recommended rezoning of RE would be more restrictive, again, requiring 10 acres or more for subdivision. The applicant's future intent, like I have said several times, is to divide 10 acres of the 53.95 to sell to his long-term tenant. Planning Commission brings, uh, recommendations of approval to rezone 10 acres, uh, from ag to RE, uh, real estate, or excuse me, estate district for the county only. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Quick question. Uh, when you say long-term tenant, is it a farmer tenant or what are you saying about that?
Uh, I'm not sure what the tenant, but I do know that, uh, that there's two house sites already on the 53 acres, and it's a single-family residential brick home that's on the property. So I'm not sure what the tenant's relationship is with the owner. But the owner is here, Commissioner.
You said long-term tenant, I was just, I mean, was it going to be like a agricultural tenant? Or is it a business or a personal?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, why don't we let the owner tell us what the definition of that word is? Because I'm wondering about it as well.
So, and the reason I put long-term is because they've been there for several times, not necessarily putting any type of definition to it for myself, so.
You can come down.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone today.
Okay.
Can you state your name?
My name is Travis Andrew Hellman. I'm the owner of 3916 Gravel Hill Road. Um, my tenants are actually here today. They have actually nothing to do with the operations of our business or farm. We just have two homes on this property, also on 3816 Gravel Hill Road. That's my residence. Um, they're just a tenant that come along that has been in the, on the property for probably seven or eight years. And, uh, they're looking to purchase the home with 10 acres.
Okay.
So that's why we're discussing the rezoning.
Well, Mr. Hellman, thank you for allowing us to get into your business.
Sir.
Thank you for allowing us to get into your business.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Travis or Ms. Angel? Okay, I really appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we'll take action later on, on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is purchases. Consider for action the purchase of one, two, I mean, $20, $21 charger in the amount of $29,999, I mean, $100 for the sheriff office from Woody Folsen Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, Vidalia, Georgia. The vehicle will replace a previous salvage charger. The vehicle is available for immediate delivery, funding is budgeted in Slide 7. Sheriff, vehicle, Assistant County Administrator Scott Allison, and Deputy Chief Pamela Johnson will address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, the sheriff's office has an immediate, immediate need for, to replace a vehicle that was totaled in an accident. We've attempted to, to place this vehicle out to bid, but, um, due to shortages with, uh, from manufacturers, um, they don't have, uh, they stopped producing 2021s, and they have no idea when they're going to be able to start, um, building 2022s. We've also checked with the state contract vendors, and we can't find any vehicles available for purchase. This is one that's available at a, a dealer, you know, in the region. That's available now, that's why we're asking for this purchase.
Okay, all good.
Most approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, the next thing, additional business. Consider for action the recommendation to accept the following health and dental plan renewal and plan desire changes for the 2020 plan year from the Insurance Review Committee. I guess, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. We're recommending approval and, uh, asking that the board take action on the recommendations that were presented last week.
Most approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, motion passed. The next item, consider for approval the acceptance of the sole proposal from Quality Refrigerated Engineering and Construction for the Architectural Services to develop the Feeding the Valley Food Bank, CDVG slash CV application. The location for the food bank is 1706 Lido Road. County Administrator Michael McCoy and Ms. Brenda Wade, Southwest Georgia Regional Commission will address. Frank Shepherd, President and CEO of Feeding the Valley Food Bank is also present. I think he's on the phone. But we have President, Michelle B. Williams, uh, who's present, who's the business manager.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we are recommending approval. Uh, if you recall, probably about a month ago, DCA, along with the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission and staff, made a presentation relative to the opportunity to expand the food bank, uh, in our community. And, uh, it will be done so by the CDVG dash CV, or, uh, grant. And this is just one step in the process. We've gone through the procurement process, so we've submitted a proposal. We're recommending approval. Uh, no money is involved at this particular time. The local food bank is awarded the grant, which we're hopeful that will happen. Uh, that grant will pay for the architectural services. But we need the board to, uh, approve this as we are the, uh, the applicant for the grant.
Most approve.
Second.
Oh, any questions?
Yes, please.
Yes, Commissioner Gang?
You said there's no money involved at this time. Is it, uh, anticipated that, uh, we will have to fund any portion of this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. The next item on the agenda is consider for approval the authorization to the budget and expend up to, up to $338,000 of American Rescue Plan funding to administer two incentive-based vaccination events for the residents of Dougherty County. The first program is scheduled for Saturday, September the 18th, uh, 2021. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, um.
Commissioner Gang?
I, I, I do want to piggyback on what you said earlier, just one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, uh, we really do need to understand, get the whole picture of how we're going to spend this money. Uh, I agree that we're chipping away at it and we don't have a total picture. And I'm curious if, uh, our county administrator can give us some idea of when we will know how we're going to spend the funds. how we're gonna spend the funds that are available and get the total picture.
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I understand your concern. This, we have an emergency situation in our community as we're a hotspot and we have a lot of deaths and a lot of folks with COVID-19. And the Treasury and federal government has recently, as of last Friday, a lot of communities said, well, we're not gonna spend any of this money until we get our, until the final rules come out. Well, that's not expected until later on in the fall and they're urging folks to spend this money now to help circulate it in the community. As you are aware, I hired Core Group and I made you aware that when I hired them, they are in the process of helping us to develop our distribution strategy, which we will present to you in October. We stated that previously when we received the money that we would do it after the first quarter of the fiscal year, which started in July. So we're on track. I suspect that we will have a presentation to you mid, no later than mid-October.
Excuse me, sir, what's the distribution process?
Our distribution strategy.
For what?
The recommendation of how we plan to, or what we're recommending to utilize the ARP funding for.
And you're calling it a distribution strategy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion that either we table this until they work the program out and remove the money away from it is my alternative motion, is to table it or, but I'm denying, I'm against it.
Second. We'll call reverse. All those in favor of making this $330,000 for the incentive program, all in favor, like the short hands of?
Which motion are we voting?
The first one, doing the first one first.
Shouldn't we do the?
You take the substitute motion first.
Yeah.
You're supposed to do the substitute first. Do the substitute motion first.
Okay, we'll offer the substitute motion, all in opposition, all in favor of the substitute motion. Short sign of hands. Okay, now, now we're going to.
The first is original.
Okay, all in favor of the original motion, show a sign of hands, okay? Madam Clerk, show two on the table and four pass. Okay, thank you. Going to the next item on the agenda. Consider for action the zoning consideration of Travis Andrew Hellman. Owner and applicant request to rezonate 10 acres of a 53.95 acre tract from Ag to RE State District. The property is located 3916 Gravel Hill Road. The Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Most do approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Aye. Ours have it, thank you again. Number 10, update from the county administrator. Mr. McCoy?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Next, to update from the county attorney.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Update from the county commissioner. I'll go to start with Commissioner Newsom first.
Nothing further.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. McCoy, you can update our tenant center at our next meeting. We'll get a tenant center update.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Well, now we'll go to Commissioner Jones.
Yes, you have in front of you a handout that was emailed to me based on trying to control blighted property in the community. Mr. McKenzie, I guess that's how you pronounce the name, about out-of-town investors causing property blight in Dougherty County. And just had a scenario of what can be done, that is proposed to be done to kind of help, help with these things. I think we have some properties like that in the county. And I was just wanting to see if, if the commission might, we might ask Mr. McCoy to kind of research this and maybe get with planning and code enforcement and see if this is something that, that is worth, is worth looking into. Because of the fact that a lot of our properties, as you know, that are blighted, that people who, they live out of town, I don't know what percentage of them, maybe Ms. Angel Gray, or some of those folks can give us, give us that at a later date, but this is something that I'd like to, to, to look at down the road and see if it's something that we can be using. Maybe the attorney, I see he's wanting to talk now, so maybe he can advise us on this or somebody.
Address him now.
Okay.
Let me, if I could, don't that one quickly, Commissioner, let me bring us up to date on what the request here is and talk a second about it. It's always good when the commission certainly looks for opportunities to decrease blight, whatever that blight might be in the unincorporated area or in the city of Albany, you still represent the, you know, people that are in the city of Albany and you can file complaints with any blights you see in the city of Albany and they'll be addressed. But it's always good to see these, but this particular one, I want to comment on because what you basically have is Comcast Inc. is selling software. And they're selling software and they're making a recommendation that we take a look at this software because out-of-town investors are buying properties at tax sale auctions and treating them as tax write-offs. Well, that's not how ours works and they're trying to solve that problem on buying delinquent tax properties and taking them as write-offs and not maintaining. I want to explain to the commission though, that's not how our tax auctions work. What we do simply is take these delinquent properties to a tax sale in August of each year. The person that buys it at the tax sale pays the taxes on it. And the person that buys it at the tax sale gets a deed from the tax office and they own the property. They own it, but they don't have possession of it for one year. For one year, they, the owner of the property has the right to redeem it, to get it back from the purchaser at the tax sale. And if they don't do that after one year, the purchaser at the tax sale can cut off that right of redemption and own the property. But during that period of time, there's no tax write-off. There's no lack of maintenance on the property. There's no lack of moving forward with code enforcement on any blighted property out there. So what Comcast is talking about is not solving the problem that exists today. Any of those particular problems that are sold at a tax sale was still subject to code enforcement violations. And each commissioner can look in his or her district and you can pick out blighted areas, whether they're tax purchase properties or not. Turn it in to Mike McCoy to give to code enforcement or call 311. And that process will begin on any property, not even this tax, tax delinquent properties in Albany. And so our situation is not the same situation that Comcast is saying, take a look at our software to keep you up to date with the process. I think if you talk with, with code enforcement, they've got a pretty good software system that takes care of all of those issues. So I'm just wondering if you really want to move forward in looking at this, this the sales pitch from Comcast to buy their, their, their software. And that, it's always good to look at anything that will address blighted property. Blighted property is anything from lawns not being mowed, trash in the yard, dilapidated homes, commercial properties with signs, with no signs on them hanging there, need to get, take care of the signs that are there. When people come in to Albany and they look at these pieces with just vacant signs that have been there for 15 years with no advertising on them, that are dilapidated, those signs are blighted also. So you can turn any of these in, you can turn them in in the city of Albany. I can walk out my door at my office downtown and I could file 20 within two blocks all around me, within the city. The most blighted areas, the most blighted areas are the older areas where you have the old properties that quite frankly surround the city, both on the east Albany side and on the west Albany side. That, they're the most blighted, you represent people in the city. So you can call those in at 311 also and they'll set up a file and they'll take a look at it under our code enforcement policies. So I just bring that up to you. My opinion of looking at this is Comcast is not offering you something that you need because the, the tax sale auctions they're talking about are not write-offs and they are being enforced by code enforcement. So I just pass that on to you.
Okay, very good, but I just want to make a comment over the last, you know, I've been in this blighted property, I guess most of the blighted properties are in District Six. Probably had five or six calls last week of people, you know, talking about blighted property, but I've, I've started to stay in my lane and, and I'm sending those calls to, to code enforcement because of the fact that I get in trouble trying to help folks and, but, but, you know, one complaint last week, we called 311, we called, we talked to folks at code enforcement and nothing has been done. So that, that's, you know, I don't know what's going on with that, but that's, that's, that's the call, got several calls, I know two last week on code violations and, and so I'm just turning them over to code enforcement to ask them to, to look into those things because it's not anything that I can do other than just take their complaint but tell them to talk to code enforcement. That property down at Liberty Expressway is still coming up, that, that barbequeal property, those folks are still calling me. I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not the person to solve those problems, but they seem to think so. And I guess I put myself out there by just trying to help some folks out there, but then we come to a, to a roadblock and there's nothing done. And I was reading the notes from the attorney that the one property down on 19, some high-powered attorney has it now and so we're gonna, so it's gonna be around a long time, looked like from what I'm seeing, and one at barbequeal as well. So just trying to help folks and, and to get something done about blighted property, especially the ones that you seen, they got a call on 19, that, that, there's a gas station down there Sunday night. So, you know, those are my, those are my, those, those, those are the thing that rubs the soul on my back because folks think I can get something done and I may unable to get something done, but I need to, we need to get something done on those things because those properties been around since 2019, some of them been around since 2017, they're still standing. And, and we got lawyers playing politics and so forth and, and just kicking the can down the road, but that's not good for our, that's not good for our, my constituents because of the fact that they're looking at me. So tell me what do I need to do when I get these calls since we have the, I think we got Ms. Gray here, we also have the, the interim director of code enforcement and we have Mr. Forgie, I don't know what he has, what his role is with it, but I want to know what do I tell these folks going forward when they call me and asking me what am I gonna do? So I'd like to hear that from some of you all out there that's in control of these code enforcement's offices and so forth, to free me up.
Well, I guess I will just piggyback on what Commissioner Jones said. I don't know if our interim director, Mr. Norman, if you wanted to make some comments or, you know, come back on a later date to be on the agenda to maybe address some of those concerns that Commissioner Jones has. I, I as well have some of those, so same concerns about, do we need more code officers with the county, et cetera? So if you want to, it's up to you, I can't really see because that, so Mr. Nor, did you want to make a comment or, you know, we won't put you on the spot, but?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I, I have been selected as the code enforcement director.
Okay, congratulations.
Oh, you the man.
I'm no more minding the store, I own the store.
Oh, man, well, that's good then.
Now, a lot of times people think that code enforcement is like being a police officer. You know, I'll pull you over for a speeding, I can give you a ticket, I can rectify that problem immediately. But code enforcement doesn't work that way. Code enforcement has to go through a process because each property owner is entitled to due process. Now, sometimes that due process take a little bit longer than we anticipate and a lot longer than most of your constituents want.
Yeah.
But we have to afford that property owner due process when we're going through these issues. Now, I'm, I have been looking into a lot of these issues. I have been filing a loan to US 19 ever since April and the only thing I can say is if you have some of those concerns, send them to me, let me know, let, let me look into them and provide you an answer because I don't have all the answers today. So give me an opportunity to look into those concerns that you may have and bring you back an answer.
Right, I understand. And also as far as the rules and regulations, I think I'm pretty much up on those things just as, you know, just as good as anybody. I think Ms. Gray and I, we've gone through a lot of this, I've been to school for this stuff, you know? And I'm pretty much along those lines, but then my thing is, is that, you know, when you got an opportunity, those, those, these brighter properties that I'm talking about, these brighter properties that have been around, the one on Dykman has been around since probably 19, since 2015. Then you got these two, you got the store down there, 2000, maybe 19 when the storms and we over in 2021, it's hard to tell folks, it's hard for folks to even want to talk to you about that kind of stuff, you know, because of the fact that they look at you as if, as if you're being, you're not being truthful with them, you know? I tell them the same thing what you're saying, okay, there's a process, there's a process, but you, you don't get the call, I get the call, I get the complaints. I got the call Sunday night, not Norman, not, not Gray, not Forgie, I got the call, you know, I'm sitting around in my place. I mean, so this is what I'm saying to you is what is the best way for us to, 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 to look at that property down on 19, the barbequeal props with a house, with a tree sitting in front of the yard? I mean, something needs to be done about those things. I mean, and, and, and we just keep, you know, we keep kicking the can down the road, but it's not, the citizen, they're not accepting that. Then you wonder why some of them go, you know, go irate or something, you know, because of the fact that they just got tired, they're tired. And I can see why because of the fact that you got a property down there on 19 that, that dilapidated station has been down there and those folks, like you said, they are still talking about it. And so I would appreciate you owning the store and I, and it's good to know somebody owning the store, but then I want to see some, you know, I'd like to see some work and done on those properties there to kind of get these folks, at least get them off of me and I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give them your number and have them to call you and, and talk with you and everybody else, but, but like you said, but even though, even at that, they still look around and then hear somebody else calling.
I understand. Like I said, get, get those addresses together if you want me to.
Get them, Ms. Gray has them, she can, she can provide you, the attorney can provide you because we've been working on these things here for, for a long time.
I do understand. And any, just like Mr. Lee said, we have that 311 for, for any new complaints or anything like that, please utilize those, those are our resources that kind of help us along.
And they're saying that they're not working. I tell them when you call 311, make sure that you get the name of the person that you talked to, the time that you talked to and begin a folder on those persons right then so that when you come back, because when they call me, they say they said that we couldn't do this and we couldn't do that. So if you tell me that Anthony Jones said on 321 of 2022 or 2021, whatever it is, then we got a record of who's, who we're talking to. Because when somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do, nobody's gonna own up to it. But these blighted properties have rubbed the soul on my back, I don't know about the other commissioners.
And again, I guess, Mr. Norman, congratulations in order.
Thank you.
You know, but I would like to see down the road if you come and review some of the things of the policy, the old policies maybe that we can, I guess, improve where we can expedite the process. I think we're Commissioner Jones, like ML King, you know, you kind, you know, you're from Albany, you came here just like all of us with Albany State and some of the stuff still look the same. You know, it's very sad when I know I have a, Ms. Breitlove, she lived to a house, she been there 40 years and the grass next door, nobody lived in the house for 30 years and we just keep calling. So again, it, it is real difficult that we continue as leaders of the community and the only answer we have is to say, this is the process or the machine is broke. You know, that's sad because we, we gotta look at, we on the same team and we want to provide the best services for the community. And the community is one who coming off the money from their taxes. So again, you know, So again, you know, it's like people just continue to lose confidence, you know? And when we do go to the grocery store, you guys are the ones who putting it, putting these things together. But I don't know about the rest of the mission, but when I go to the grocery store, when I get gas, if they see me, oh yeah, they coming.
Yeah.
And, and the only thing I'm saying, let me call Mr. Norman. But again, it's like it's hard to explain, and that was just one example of Ms. Breedlove. I know she been on ML King for fifty years and the house next to her has been vacant. And here's a lady calling me saying, hey, Mr. Commissioner, a possum in the yard. And we saying we don't, we can't do anything, just maintain the front yard. Can't tell you what to do in the backyard. So again, you know, again, I appreciate you. But if some of those things that you think we need to do as a city commissioner, as well as a county commissioner, maybe we need to review the policies and see what we can do. Also help with the judges, to see can we expedite. So again, you know, I do appreciate you and all you do and we're gonna keep teaming up together, you know?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Commissioner Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add one, perhaps two comments to that. I do think that we need to look at the aesthetic quality of our community, which I think will be an all encompassing, um, uh, policy examination to determine whether or not we have the right policies for this time and age, you know? Uh, in place to protect the aesthetic quality of our community because that's terribly important, you know? And I don't know when the last time we did a comprehensive look at all of those policies and ordinances that determine whether or not our community looks good or not. But we might need a, a more comprehensive view, which would be, you know, all encompassing and updated. Uh, we might need to do that.
Yes, yes, yeah, right.
Uh, and, um, the other thing is that you have to resource it. And we only have so much allocation in our budget to certainly do the code enforcement, to have employees. And then to get through the legal system. And then if, if we have to clean the property up, there is also a cost involved there. So in order to do it, it has to be properly resourced. And I would suggest that that is not the case at this time, that, that it's, we don't have the budget and, and the proper resources to actually achieve some of the outcomes we'd like to have. Would that be your assessment as well, that we are not?
I don't have a full assessment, but that has been the one thing I kept, I keep coming across.
The resources.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right. So, so, uh, part of that is on us as well. Quite a bit of it is on this commission rather than the staff.
I would like to add that the board did approve adding an additional code enforcement officer from the county back in twenty twenty.
Okay. Have we hired that person?
No, I have not.
Okay, so you had the process now, we're taking the application.
I actually had a person come on and they didn't stay. They didn't make it past noon.
Repeat that, Mr. Norman?
I had, I hired a person on.
Okay.
And that morning, and they left at one o'clock.
Right.
So it's hard to make.
And they didn't like you that. We, we pull up with your phone.
So it, 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 right now, the, the hiring pool is, is real hard. And making, having people to come and stay or even accepting the job, you could, I, I, I did five interviews. I had four people call back and say that they declined to accept the position. So I've been going through this here since April. So I do understand, I do appreciate having that additional resource out there. It's just a matter of filling that resource.
Yeah.
Well, let, let me just say, to tighten this up a bit, that at some point, and I know, you know, we're kind of tied up now, but at some point, Mr. McCoy, you need to kind of start this commission down the road of looking at how our community, the appearance in our community and whether or not our ordinances are, uh, are need updating in order to achieve the outcome that we want, a better looking community. So we need to have you come to us and with a comprehensive look at our ordinances, okay?
Now, these properties that I'm talking about, these properties I'm talking about in court, these, these, these properties, they've been, they've been in court. These are the ones I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the one that a new code enforcement officer is going to address. I'm talking about the ones that are already, where they're supposed to be, and supposed to be what they're supposed to be getting, where we can move those out of the way and something get done. These are the ones I'm talking about. Dykman, Barbregale, Liberty Expressway. Those are the ones that, that I get the most calls from, all the rest of them. Like I said, attorney, he's not taking the call, you're not taking the call. I'm taking the call. I'm taking the heat from these folks who are irate. So I, you know, I want to, you know, I want to move those on out of the way so that at least, you know, you can get them off me. I don't mind, I don't mind taking the hit for things that I'm in control of. I'm a big boy. But I, I don't want to take nobody else whipping. And that's what I'm doing now. I'm taking y'all's whipping. And I'm, and I'm, I'm sore.
Well, again, thank you.
May I comment on that, please? Uh, all, everything that you're talking about, Commissioner, on Barbregale and on nineteen, that ball is in my court. And I've sent out, I've sent out the information to the commissioners on what the status of each one of those are.
Right.
And we took it to court and agreement was signed with the nineteen folks. And we were in, 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 in conversations with the, with, with the mortgage company on Barbregale. And you've got a schedule of what's happening on each one of those issues. And on the nineteenth, as you're aware, of course, the storm came in and knocked it down. Let me give you a little background on that, on that, on that convenience store on nineteen in Holly. That property was zoned, resident, uh, I'm sorry, agricultural at one time, a small piece of property. And it was owned agriculture. Folks came in and applied for a zoning change on that particular piece of property. The county voted it down and they applied for it to be commercial. So it, we landed in court with it. There was no way that it could be used, eight acres could be used for agriculture right on the corner of Holly and nineteen. So it was obvious that we were going to lose the case, but we litigated it anyway. And the College Park folks wanted it to remain agriculture. I worked with them. I told them we had a hard case. We litigated it. We lost and it was zoned commercial. They ended up building the, uh, building the service station there and storm knocked it down. And then it sat there for a while, while the storm knocked a bunch of places down. It sat there for a year or so while, while we were, while I was soon planning and developing the services and code enforcement were looking at it. But no decisions were made during a certain period of time for them to rehabilitate, uh, just like they did with the houses that were knocked down at Liberty Expressway. Then we started looking at it again. And the folks out there, every time we'd go to court with them, they filed bankruptcy. It ended up in a bankruptcy court. There was a state that got issued. We couldn't do anything with them for that period of time. The state was then lifted and as soon as it was lifted, a new owner came in. As soon as that new owner came in, within a couple of months or so, the petition was filed. And now they, they're in court and they have agreed to a consent order. That consent order said over a period of ninety days, you have to do these things. And if you don't do these things, then the county can tear it down. One of the things that they were supposed to do within forty five days, according to code enforcement, and code enforcement needed, was to get a structural assessment for the steel that was out there to see if they could even rehabilitate. They hired Jupiter Construction. Jupiter Construction did file their structural assessment report on time. So they're within the forty five day. And I've sent this to all the commissioners. I don't, I can resend it if I need to. But you, but you've got a copy of the consent agreement and you've got a write up on what they're supposed to do. The next thing they're supposed to do within ninety days is to file a, a permit to reconstruct it if they feel like they can do that. If they don't do that, then the county can go tear it down. So it's in the process. Barbregale, same thing. It's in the process and you have a write up on it. All you have to do is see if the write up is being followed. So I would suggest that, and I know it's taken a long time. And I know the folks out in, in, in College Park are upset with it. I, I know the people in College Park. The same thing happened to Betty's Drive out there. We finally took action against Betty's Drive and it's being rehabilitated. And, and one of our former commissioners is doing the construction work. So I'm, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the College Park folks and I understand exactly how you're being called all the time. But we're in court with it and we've got a schedule and let's see if we follow the schedule. So I would say the same thing about any piece of property that goes to code enforcement. Code enforcement has a software system that gives you up to date information on what the process of any complaint is at any one particular point in time. You can access that. We can access that. Now, to see if the system works, to see if we've got the right regulations in place, I would suggest once again for each commissioner to go look throughout his or her district. Turn in, turn in these areas. Might give them, give it to Mike McCoy. He will then give it to code enforcement and track it and see if it works. If it doesn't work, then we can come back and say, this is the reason it didn't work, or you're the reason it didn't work, or we need more regulations. But all you have to do is go right around your district, send it to Mike, it goes to code enforcement. You don't have to deal with three one one. You can go straight to Mike. And everybody can turn in whatever they want to turn in and track it. And then we'll see how it works and whatever else might be needed. But I do understand that we need to address the blight issues. But I, I think you have the capability to do that now.
Spencer, can I, can I add? And I'd, I'd encourage you, I get calls too about stuff. Encourage people to use the three one one app because it will, once you register on it, it will send you updates. It'll send you a case number that you can call back and say, hey, case number one, two, three, four, what's the status? It's, has anybody addressed it? If there's resolution to it, you'll get notification. So there is a feedback system that comes. So when you forget, you call three one one a month ago, you get an update saying that you have. Um, and that way, we're teaching people how to fish instead of fishing for them. So I do think it helps educate people in the community about the resources that their tax dollars provide for them to help them be active, engaged citizens rather than putting the burden on your commissioner to do the work and us having to dump it onto Mike. Um, you know, there's cases where, you know, we need to do that, but, you know, let's, it, it's been helpful to educate people on the three one one app.
That's good, but I just need to be, be, be with these properties that, that we got in court, those are the ones that are most troubling. Because I think I read somewhere, I read the information that you're trying to, you're right, I do have the information. I've read that. I looked at the, the property over on Liberty Expressway.
I saw something that this thing could be drug out as far as twenty twenty two, uh, uh, some language in there or based on an attorney or something, you know? I'm familiar with this stuff. I've been reading this stuff because it's been a thorn in my side. I'm familiar with the paperwork, but I just need to see some action. That's what the most, that's what the people out there are wanting.
Well, again, uh, thank you, Mr. Norman. Um, if you would take, I guess, the heartwood Commissioner Gaines was saying, and maybe we can come back later and really have another discussion on some of those policies, uh, that maybe expedite, close some of the things with code. And we hope you find you another person because we really need another person. Again, thank you. So I'll go back to the finalization of the county commission. Commissioner Gaines?
Uh, yes, I have two concerns. Um, one I'm directed to the county attorney and that's about redistricting. Uh, can you tell us what calendar we have to abide by? And when we're supposed to get kicked off with it and how do we form, how do, how do we get it done and when?
Did he hear? Yeah, I'll, I'll give the commissioner redistricting update sometime in the near future. I'll put me on the agenda and I'll give you a complete update.
I, I, I guess I'll piggyback on what, you finished with, you had one more?
I had, I had one more.
Okay, go ahead.
The other one was, uh, what is our calendar? This is addressed to the commission. What is our calendar for? We know that the venerated county attorney will be leaving on January one. Uh, what is our calendar for his replacement?
I guess that question would be going to Mr. McCoy. Have you, have we, I guess, what's the process? Are we going to do a RFQ? Are we going to put the application? I guess that's what Commissioner Gaines is saying for is replacing the county attorney.
Uh, yes, of course, the county attorney is involved in that process and our HR department is managing that. I'm not sure if an announcement has gone out yet.
No, it, no, it hasn't. And, uh, if my understanding is that my marching orders are to kind of oversee that process. And I plan to do that. It's, uh, it, it's a little early to be doing that, quite frankly. And my, my thought was that we'd start that process maybe the middle of October.
Middle of October.
Right. It's, it's not the same process as hiring a county administrator. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a professional position and it, and it doesn't have to have a contract attached to it. It can, but it's not the same process from an advertising standpoint as hiring a county administrator. But it will be advertised.
Okay, so we can expect to hear from you in early October about how we do it and when we do it, right?
Well, I'll, I'll meet with the human resources director and I've talked with her once. And we'll put together a process and get back with the commission on it.
Thank you.
Now, I want to follow up on the redistricting part here. Uh, you know, I'd like to, I'm not, I'm not familiar with redistricting other than what I, you know, what I, what I've read about it. But I, you know, uh, one of my cousins in Alabama who was, uh, uh, who was an elected official, uh, sitting around probably, I don't know what the redistricting is, but anyway, sitting around there and they found out that they drew him out of his district. And, and he, he, so I just want to know a lot about this stuff because it, it, it can get hairy if it's in the wrong hand. So I'd, I'd like to be very much aware and not sit around. I don't know what the dates are, the deadlines. So I, I, whatever it is, I, you know, I want to be up on my game so that at least I'll be able to talk intelligent about it. May not be able to do anything about it, but at least talk intelligent about it.
Yeah, I think the process is, don't we supposed to have a committee, a, a redistricting committee that I guess represent the county as well as the school board? Supposed to have a committee? Mr. McCoy?
You know, I could, I could give you bits and pieces right now, but it would be better, Mr. Chairman, if I'm scheduled at a meeting to go over the whole procedure and take a little more time to do that.
Okay.
But you're correct.
Yeah, I know a committee is supposed to be.
And, and if you recall, you do have a file that I gave you on redistricting, if you've had an opportunity to go over it.
Okay.
I would like to add that ACCG is having their regional miss, uh, meeting on Tuesday, October fifth from nine thirty AM to three PM where they'll discuss lost negotiations as, as well as redistricting.
Okay, so I, I get.
It's in Lee County at the library.
Now, I don't know, I don't know how the rest of the commission feel, but what about, you know, to me, um, I would throw out that it should be probably turned over to that government affairs committee that we have. Anybody have any opposition to that? Commissioner Jones? We're like, we have a government affairs who would be the perfect opportunity where if we have to have a committee after the attorney talk about it. But that, you know, who else on that government affairs? You, Russell?
I don't think so.
Yeah, well.
But then that would be one of, you know, problem.
I mean, I think it, you know, it affects every one of us. It affects the whole county. I mean, I think it's probably something that we all need to be educated collectively and participate in collectively on.
I agree.
Um, this is, it's a unique situation. It doesn't occur very often, but.
Right, every ten years.
I didn't want to put the people who like to read on there.
Yeah, well, I, I'm probably the only one sitting on this commission who was there the last time it was done. Yeah, well, I, I'm probably the only one sitting on this uh, commission who was there the last time it was done. And if my recollection is correct, uh, there was a joint committee of the school board and the um, uh, uh, county commission that sat with a consultant and went through all of the data and redrew the lines, now it was just that simple.
Okay, well, good, any comments, Commissioner Newsom? Okay, Commissioner Jones? Okay, all right. Well, now, next, uh, last commissioner, Commissioner Rush, you have anything? Okay. Uh, number thirteen, here we go, consider for approval the recommendation for the county attorney to enter into uh, executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation and then, so you have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dorian County Commissioner, the meeting is adjourned.